I'm calling to order the June 22 Norton Select Board meeting. And currently present are Denise Luciano, Alec Rich, Steve Hornsby, and myself. I think we're expecting Meg Arts at some point, so. But we're going to go ahead and get started. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a bunch of appointments to do this evening, so we'll dive right into those. The first is appointment of Mark Levesque as the Highway Mechanic to the Highway Department. Mike, any commentary on this, or?
So Keith Silver recommended Mark Levesque to be hired as a mechanic at the Highway Department, obviously a tough position to fill, and we're lucky to have Mark come forward. Mark has worked for, since 2004, as a mechanic at ERJ Transportation in West Bridgewater, and before that at Hall Smith Cisco Food Services. So he's a factory-trained certified mechanic, and we're looking forward to filling that position.
Okay.
What did you say, Keith did recommend him?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and it's written down.
All right, so I'll take a motion to make the appointment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. Unanimous to passes. Welcome to Mark Levesque as our new Highway Mechanic. Next up is appointment of Peter Lally as the full-time Assistant Town Clerk to the Town Clerk's Department.
Okay, Peter is with us tonight, and glad we have the opportunity for you to meet Peter. Peter is a graduate of the University of Vermont, and Peter's from Mansfield. In Mansfield, Peter was a member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee at the University of Vermont. He was very heavily involved in student government. And Peter worked as track coach and camp counselor, and worked running Senator Feeney's campaign in 2022. Before coming to us, he was working for Digital Products Marketing Associates, where he was working on the development of a website and launch marketing materials through the company. And Peter is very knowledgeable and enthusiastic, and we're looking forward to having him work with us.
All right. Peter, do you have your speech prepared?
I've been working for the past two weeks with Town Clerk Lucie Long-Harrison. I've had a great experience so far. Had a very great introduction from Town Manager Units, and yeah, I think he summed up pretty well what I was going to introduce myself as, so I'd appreciate your appointment.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Peter?
This is the worst event. Get in front of the spot. It gets better from here.
Just quick general questions. What is your degree in, and what makes you want to be a town clerk?
So my degree is in Public Communications, and I have a minor in Political Science and Studies in Speech and Debate. I want to be a town clerk because, and applied for the position because I've always been very interested in politics and been appreciative of the work that town clerks do, having been involved with different campaigns in the past and seeing it firsthand. So I'm really interested in it, and I think it's a great office to work for.
Great, thanks.
All right. Excellent. We don't have any other questions, and we'll take a motion.
A motion to appoint.
No, go ahead.
A motion to appoint Peter Lally as Assistant Town Clerk.
I'll second.
Okay, and just for the record, this appointment is effective May 30. Do we have any further discussion? If not, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Effective June 14.
Oh, sorry.
Right.
Oh, the appointment was made on May 30. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, and effective June 14. Yep, okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you.
So moved.
All right. Next up is an appointment to the Civilian Traffic Control Unit of Brian Sullivan. This appointment is effective June 22, 2023. Mike, anything on this one?
Yeah, just on the effective date, I asked that you make the date June 8, and the Chief is here to talk on this.
Yeah, so both, good evening. Both of the new appointments, Brian Sullivan and Jared Fucci, I think I mentioned it maybe the last Select Board meeting I came to, we're looking to start, you know, kind of the farm club. We don't have the special police anymore. Both these gentlemen are interested in being police officers. Both have graduated from college. One, Brian Sullivan, has graduated from Framingham State University with a Bachelor's of Science in Criminology, and Jared Fucci, just recently graduated from Roger Williams College, again with a degree in Criminal Justice. Both are Norton residents, and just asking for appointments.
All right. All right, any questions for Chief Clark?
Just understand the role. Is it just directing traffic during construction or whatever it's going on?
Yes, exactly. This will bring our complement to seven, which will be a good base that we'll have, so.
Chief, I just have kind of a, sort of a random question. Do we do like criminal background checks and things like that on these guys before they're appointed?
Sure, so they do go through a background check. Detectives do it. They both pass the background check. They also need CPR and first aid, and they do go through a medical, basically to make sure that they can do the job, so.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions? Nope.
Will you move both of these at once?
I think they have different effective dates.
If you just read the different dates for each one.
Yep.
Okay, so June 8 for Brian Sullivan?
June 8 for Brian, right? And then June 30 for Jared.
July 1.
Oh, July 1.
For Jared.
July 1. All right, so a motion to appoint Brian Sullivan to Civilian Traffic Control Unit, effective date June 8, and Jared Fucci to the Civilian Traffic Control Unit, effective July 1, 2023.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome to both of them. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Effectively?
Yep, go ahead.
On the reappointments, if you could just read all the names, they're all effective on the same date, July 1.
Okay. All right, we're ready. And this is, this is all the reappointments for Civilian Traffic Control. Okay. So effective July 1, we have appointments for Alex Turcock for Civilian Traffic Control Unit, Dean Santangelo, Nicholas Carvalho, that's it.
And James, the church ones.
Sorry, James Domagalski. All right, so I'll take a motion to reappoint those four individuals to the Traffic Control Unit.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
And the same with the special police officers. We have three reappointments. If you could just read those names, and they're all effective July 1.
All right, I'll take a motion to appoint Patrick Mahoney, Todd Bramwell, Timothy Garippe. Is that pronounced right?
Garippe.
Garippe. And Susan Huff. Oh, sorry, no, Susan is Police Matron, so go back. Start over. I will take a motion to appoint a special police officer, Patrick Mahoney, Todd Bramwell, and Timothy Garippe.
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 So moved.
Okay, and that is effective July 1. Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, Police Matron.
Chair?
Go ahead.
Yep, just a quick question. Can I just ask what that is, what the role is?
Sure. So when we have a female prisoner, we call in a matron, if there's not a female officer working, to watch the female, to search the female. It doesn't happen a lot, but when it does happen, we have a female there.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right. And these are effective July 1, or?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to appoint Susan Huff and Stephanie Langton, reappoint them as Police Matron, effective July 1, 2023.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
If I could, well, the Chief's here, something I was going to mention in my town officials report.
Yep.
Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to the ceremony in Burlington for the police reaccreditation, the third accreditation for the Norton Police Department. And Todd Jackson served as the accreditation manager and was assisted by Kevin Schlecker. And I know it's a lot of work, and I appreciate everything they did to have the department reaccredited. The Chief wants to say something.
Sure, so we've been, we've been a certified police department since 2012. We became certified, and then in 2014, we got an initial accreditation. You asked what is accreditation? It's basically meeting the best practices and standards set forth by the Massachusetts Accreditation Police Committee. It's a big process. It's a big undertaking. It's not only following our, making sure that our policies are up to date, but it's also showing that we follow the policies by providing basically proof that we're doing what we say we do. It's also, you know, making sure that our station and our cruisers and our evidence, our communication is all in following the best standards. So for our accreditation, we had to pass 257 mandatory standards, and then 55% of 125 optional standards, which we passed 69 standards of those. So this is, this is our third reaccreditation, so it's a big undertaking. It's a lot of work, but it's a, it's really a badge of achievement in Massachusetts. And, you know, with, with police reform in post, it's really a gold standard, so. It's fantastic. Appreciate it. We appreciate the town manager assisting yesterday and eating lunch.
Well, there were clearly.
That's why you weren't on.
There were clearly no leftovers, right?
Well, they served lunch first, too, so I texted Brian, I said, I got my lunch, can I just leave?
I gotta run.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're all very proud of the police department here, and we talk about you guys all the time, so congrats, it's great.
Appreciate the support. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, so how do we want to do the list?
So if I could just mention, everyone on the list was sent a letter asking them if their intent, whether they wanted to be reappointed. As you can see, there's four that have asked not to be reappointed. They can't serve anymore. And so it's up to you, Mr. Chairman. You could just approve the list as presented, unless anyone wants to go.
Okay. Well, let's see what the board wants to do. So do you guys want to go one by one? I would say just do the whole list, but we certainly should open it up for discussion if anybody wants to discuss any of these appointments, so. Anybody have any, any questions or discussion on any of the appointments?
I do. I'm fine going by the whole list.
Okay. Denise?
I was just going to get the names. I'm good. This is just the fourth list, right?
Yeah. This is, we're just talking about this first list here.
It's the easiest.
Yeah. All right, so I will entertain a motion to reappoint the individuals' end positions as listed in the agenda packet, effective June 30, 2023. All those marked in the column "yes" would be reappointed.
Right, and one appointment, if I could mention, Kathy Eno, Board of Registars, effective March 31, 2023 technically, so.
Got it, okay. Okay, so the, so the motion also references Kathy Eno as her effective date of March 31, 2023. Anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. All right. Is that a record for most appointments done at one time?
It will be.
And just for the minutes, just want to let everyone know that Meg Arts is here, and she arrived at 7:17 PM. Hi, Meg.
Hi, how are you?
All right.
We're almost done.
Yeah.
Not really.
Seriously?
Oh, yeah, we're getting through it.
Yeah. What's the record? Okay, we'll talk about that later.
We're going to send it right now.
Stop, stop, the record.
Okay, and then we have, similarly, we have a list of the appointments for the Council on Aging.
That's just for informational purposes. And the request is to move Tom Galata from an alternate on the Council on Aging to a permanent member of the Council on Aging through 2023, and reappoint him through June 30, 2026.
Okay, so he's currently an alternate.
He's currently an alternate. That was a mistake in naming him as an alternate. We should have done it as a permanent member. So if you could appoint him as a permanent member of the council through June, through June 30, 2023, and reappoint him to serve through June 30, 2026.
Okay. I think I got it.
I want to come in here with a so moved.
Okay.
I'll move to appoint Tom Galata, the Council on Aging, to June 30, 2023. And reappoint through June 30, 2026.
As a permanent member.
As a permanent member.
So moved. Second.
So just moved him.
Oh, he moved it.
Yeah. No, you can move it. No, I've got to stay on my thunder. Go for it.
All right, so we have a move by Steve, and a second by Denise.
Denise.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous to make Tom a permanent member.
Did we skip over one, I missed a Kathy Eno?
On the last?
Oh, we did, yes, yeah. So, sorry, because she was also on the other list, right?
That you're extending it, is that what you're saying?
So she was appointed as of 3/31/23 to the Board of Registars. Yeah, we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, we did it when we did the list.
Okay, that's true.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When we said so moved, that was included.
Yeah. All right. Thought I missed something there. All right, so next up is approval of minutes. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? Any amendments to the minutes?
Do we have to?
No, that was, that was just in the thing.
Okay, sorry.
I think that was in the mail. Yeah.
That's on, no, it's on?
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah.
But it was in.
It's number eight.
Was she also on the list?
No, it's for Democratic Town Committee. Oh, I see what happened.
Ken was the new today, so I couldn't get.
All right, hang on. So on the agenda, it says Kathy Eno to the Democratic Board of Registars, which?
The separate item.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, all right, thanks, Steve. So, so. So that's the same appointment, right? This Board of Registars? Yep.
Yeah, it's the same one on the table.
And that's the same appointment as this one, right? So we don't have to do that again? Okay. All right. You guys are confused.
Aye.
Stop it.
That is the back of the book.
Yeah, that's.
That's we answered.
No, I got it.
Trying to make sure we don't get the record tonight, you know?
Yeah, Steve, why are you slowing us down? All right. Okay, back to the minutes. So does anybody have any amendments or questions on the minutes for May 25, 2023? I don't have anything. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved for May 25, 2023. All right, so we have three licenses slash permits to approve.
Thank you.
Get to that page.
Is Alec up?
Oh, Alec's up.
Oh, right, yes.
Let's do it.
Can't you do them all, like, we could vote on all of them together?
They're all the same.
One's a special events parking.
They're different days.
The other one's a one-day beer and wine, the other one's a one-day all alcohol.
Let's do them separate. We'll do them separately.
There's just three.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. So vote to approve a special events parking permit application to property owner Shane Berbey in Laurin Millip, 36 parking spaces at 260 Mansfield Ave, from June 1, 2023 to September 30, 2023.
They have done this previously, and it's right on the Norton Mansfield line.
Is it for the Xfinity Center?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
Literally right next door to the Xfinity Center.
So why did they do it now, not earlier? I mean, it says June, but.
They must have just been late getting in.
They missed a couple of.
I think I saw, yeah, I think I saw on the packet.
Click the police.
Approved by the police, right? On June 21, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, everyone did sign off on all the permits.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve from Alec. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Number two.
Next one, number two, vote to approve the one-day beer and wine liquor license to Guillermo Runquillo for a private event at the Everett Leonard Park from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, August 19, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then, number three.
Number three, vote to approve the one-day all-alcohol liquor license to Bethany Lynn LeBeau and Richard LeBeau for a private event at the Everett Leonard Park from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, July 22, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. Thanks, Alec.
You're welcome.
And next up, we have announcements. Mike, do you want to talk about the foreclosure property stuff?
I saw the signs. I was doing a walk today.
What's that?
I saw the signs. I was walking through my power walk, and I saw them.
So on June 28, Wednesday, June 28, next Wednesday at 11:00 AM at the library, there's going to be an auction of properties that were acquired for, they were foreclosed on tax, for tax title. And so when we have properties that are foreclosed for tax title, the treasurer-collector, as the tax title custodian, sends the list to all departments to see if conservation or water and sewer, anyone's interested in any of the parcels. She'll pull out any that they're interested in, so they don't get auctioned off. And then the list, then, is what we're now auctioning off on the 28th, and hope to get these, sometimes they're just small parcels next to someone's house that they may want.
Well, I was going to say, so some of the two that I saw were down off a reservoir, and they were, they looked like they were land. They weren't houses.
Right. Some of it's land, and, you know, people could buy it, and the butters. I know we have one homeowner that's very interested, because he wants to add a garage onto his house, and he'd be too close to the lot line, but if he buys the parcel next door, he'll be in good shape, so hopefully he's going to be there for the auction and get that parcel.
They're all listed as zero on the streets. Is that intentional, so?
Yeah, anything that's not assessed, they always list it as zero, and they just go by the parcel numbers.
Okay.
It's not intentional, it's just, they're not assigned a number until they pull a building requirement to put a house on it.
Mr. Chairman, through, can I ask? Mike, is there, so we have, there's a property, and just, I gotta believe there's other properties around town that are like this, but we have a property across the street from us that was foreclosed on, the bank bought it, and they started renovation, and then they just stopped. And so it's just been sitting there for years. And it's now covered with trees, so I actually forget about it, but I'm like.
Give me the address.
It's right across, so it's on reservoir, it's right across from us. 290, oh, I'll get the address. But I'm curious, like, what recourse do we have in terms of, I mean, they're literally just sitting there, like, it's half, like, ripped apart and whatever.
We don't have a lot of recourse unless it becomes a safety hazard. If, say, the windows are all smashed and kids are going in there, then we have recourse to get the owner to board it up, or we can put, we can board it up, put a lien on it for what we spent money on. I know it's tough. I know in my previous position, during the height of the foreclosure period there in 2008, there were homes, there were all, every day there was a foreclosure in town, and they became overgrown. I mean, we call and do what we can, but can't force someone to.
Why would the bank just leave it there, though? It's crazy.
I know sometimes, I used to work in mortgage business, I know sometimes the banks will allow people to stay because they know that the house would be somewhat cared for if they're there, so I know even though they're foreclosed, they'll let them stay there, but sometimes they just leave.
It's one of those, I keep thinking, I have to ask that question.
And I know the problem, like, in 2008, to try and find out who actually held the mortgage, because so many banks failed.
Yeah. They don't even exist anymore.
But there's not much we can do unless it becomes something that the building commissioner can enforce on a health agent.
Yeah. So Steve and I went to the Habitat for Humanity ceremony, the groundbreaking ceremony, I guess it was. How does that process work? Like, how do we determine, like, if there's a property that we might want to donate to?
That was actually my question, if any of these don't sell, could that be the next step?
Could be, yeah. So what we, what we had to do with that property, that had a home on it that was falling apart, and everyone was on our case to, because we had actually foreclosed on it, and everyone was on our case to tear the house down, so it would have started costing us money. And so we had it turned over at town meeting to the Board of Selectmen, our select board, with the authority of the select board to sell it. And the select board sold it for a dollar.
So that's something that does have to go to town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if any of these don't sell, that could be the process? We could bring it to town meeting?
I mean, that'd be great, like, why not?
I would love to do that.
Right, why not?
I think that was such a fantastic thing.
It's a great opportunity.
Yeah. Because I...
It's good to know.
And I went through this list, I thought, I think one of them had a house on it.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure which one it was. But anyway.
But Habitat for Humanity, I bet would buy, if they gave them the property, I'd love to build it from scratch, it'd be probably easier.
Yeah, even if there's a parcel that's big enough, yeah.
And the thing is, you're taking a property that isn't paying any taxes, and it's become... They're paying taxes.
Right.
There's a benefit.
All right, well, maybe we could take a look at what we got to work with for fall town meeting and see if there's an opportunity there to do another one. More than one.
So that option is June 28th?
Correct.
That one's coming up.
All right. Cool. I think, Alec, you wanted to, you had a couple of announcements you wanted to make as well?
Couple of quick things, yeah. I just want to speak about the Carnival as a member of the Veterans Council. The Carnival was a tremendous success.
You could say that.
And we've gotten nothing but positive feedback. You know, between Allegiant, Gold Star, and DFW, you know, all of us, we couldn't be, you know, more happy. It was very productive. So we already have secured that company for next year around the same time. So we're hoping the school committee can work with us again, and, you know, if that's going to be the site that we're going to do it again. And I'd like to do another one, possibly in the fall. And I don't know if that's... At its inception, but these Carnival companies usually book a year round, so... Or more, so...
Talk to the NBA, or let's talk.
Okay. But that was a huge success. You know, as far as the gazebo, I don't know if anyone's seen the gazebos.
I feel it.
In place. The Coppola was installed, and I think Cliffy, by the end of the week, Cliff Archer from Archer Electric is going to be buttoning up the electric electrical. Did he already do it, Mike? Do you know, did he do it today?
I don't, I didn't see him out there.
Yeah. But that's going to be relatively soon. And then, 1/23, he's made, that's in process. Thank God.
What's the timeframe on that?
It should be...
Two to four years.
By the end of the year.
Most of it should be paved this week.
This week, yeah.
I think there'll be like 800 feet left to do. And then they have to do the sidewalks. But they did tell me a few weeks ago when I was out there, that we won't have to extend the easements. They will be done in 2024, so they expect to be done by the spring, so...
I drove down with, we have a wheelchair van, and it's like this high off the ground, and I made the mistake last weekend to drive that way. We was going about a half a mile an hour just to get there.
They almost made it, unfortunately. They got hit with a rainstorm.
It was right before the rain, so I got lucky.
Saturday, that rain. So Sunday morning, as you know, had to get somebody. I just... I knew that Andy, the super job super, and he came out, you know, commendable to him on Father's Day. He came out and regraded those huge craters, thankfully. And then, the last thing, just a point of note regarding... It's been brought to my attention from the Traffic Safety Committee about Home Foods, the old Cisco building. They had been asked, and they had agreed to as well, from my understanding, to put a few signs because of the noise of the trucks, the orientation of the trucks going in and out of there. They just hadn't done it yet, so we may be asked to have a joint meeting with them and then, like...
I think we've already asked for a joint meeting, yeah. We're going to ask for them. Yeah, the Home Foods was, they promised to put signs, directional signs in for these trucks to go around a different way. And that was several months ago, and they haven't been put in.
Didn't they lose their contact there? Didn't he go somewhere else?
They have a revolving door, of course, I know.
Well, the guy that we used to work with was awesome, and he was very helpful.
I've met with him myself, too, and they're very appeasing in person. I was just hoping that they would get this stuff done, and they didn't, so...
So how do we get them... Like, should we send them a letter? Should we bring them in? What should we do?
Well, I'll send them a letter first and tell them if not...
And bring them in?
Well, I can come in. Alec had mentioned me the other day, so that was the first thing about it, so I'll send them a letter. The signs you want inside the property directing trucks to go around the back.
Yeah, there was minimal signage. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a lot. But it was something they agreed to, so... It wasn't anything on the street. It was in...
There was nothing on the street.
On site.
All right, thanks, Alec. Anybody got any other announcements you want to make? No? All right. Next up. New business. A discussion to... Oh, 4th of July is on Tuesday this year.
It's on a Tuesday. And obviously, July 3rd is going to be a day that I don't expect much action at the Town Hall. I always said when I was running my own business that July 4th week and the weekend between Christmas and New Year's was always the slowest week of the year. So if people are willing to use their own time, I just wanted to see if the board would be okay if the Town Hall was closed on that day. It's a good time to get people to bird time, because it's slow, and have them use up some of their time.
I have a question. So what if an employee doesn't want to use their time?
If they don't want to, they can come in, but the majority of them will, so we would have enough people to staff. If we were going to stay open, we'd have to make sure that there was someone in every single office. But if, say, the treasurer wants to come in because it's the end of the year, and she's got to get stuff done, they can come in.
But the Town Hall would be closed to the public.
To the public.
So it's not, yeah, so they still take their vacation days if they want to vacation?
Right.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions? All right. Then I'll take a motion to approve the closure of town departments on Monday, July 3rd, 2023, in observance of Independence Day.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And then we've got a few Sersgi.
I never, myself, I'm chairman of a group, but I never know whether to call it Sersg... Sersg.
Right, right. So go ahead. So actually, if you wouldn't just do a quick, what is Sersg and how it works?
So Sersg is a consortium of about 24 towns that we get together to go up to bid for a certain product, so we need a better price, because there's more units involved. Once again, on paper, so the paper contract, WB Mason was the only person, the only company to submit. And as you can see, the prices, the bid price of $44.80 per carton for 20-pound white paper, $46.80 for 20-pound white eight-and-a-half-inch by 11-inch letter with three-hole punch, $47.30 with 20-pound white letter recycled paper. And I always find it interesting that the recycled paper is more than regular paper. I just never understood that.
Even the regular paper seems kind of high, but it's the only bid. Yeah, we get it, I get it for like $42.
Some of the, some of it actually went down. So the 20-pound eight-and-a-half by 11 paper at $44.80 per carton, was at $49.80 per carton last year. So that's interesting. And the 24-pound we have this year is... But I was surprised that some of them did go down. So if you have any questions, or if you could vote to approve the paper contract?
You guys have any questions on the paper or contract?
Yeah, for you, Chair, just a question. I guess a general needs Sersg or Sersg.
Sersg.
Sersg. Why do you suspect that you're only getting one bidder, for instance, for the paper? Like, it seems like it would be easier for us to just comparatively look at, like, local state office goods, right?
We've reached out to, like, Staples and to see if we can get a bid, and no one bids on...
Things change to me.
I get it.
They probably can't, you know, they can't compete with WB Mason's.
Uline, Office Depot, Staples.
Uline's expensive.
Any other questions on the paper or contract?
Riveting stuff. You with us, everybody?
We can, we can make up a discussion if you like. The, but it is good to hear that some of the costs were down, because that was not, that was an issue. Everything was going up the last couple of weeks, so with COVID and everything else. So that's encouraging. So, all right. I'll entertain a motion to award the Sersg fiscal year '24 paper contract to WB Mason.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, next up is the office supplies.
So the office supply, it's a discount of 56.1% off all supplies in their catalog, and 31.1% off on any toner in their catalog.
51%?
56.1%.
Can I, like, order a chair or something?
Actually, I don't think chairs are, no, office furniture.
All right, no, that's excluded right there in letter A. Okay, any questions or comments on the office supplies contract? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve or award the Sersg fiscal year '24 to '25 office supplies contract to WB Mason.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, water sewer treatment chemicals.
One thing on paper, WB Mason, I forget what the percentage is, but the use of paper is plummeting, you know? They're going heavily now into cleaning supplies for our offices.
Janitorium.
Yeah, they can't make it on the paper. So the water and sewer treatment chemicals. So the first is liquid potassium hydroxide, and the low bidder is Borden in Remington at $5.22 per gallon. Then liquid potassium hydroxide is also Borden in Remington, $5.99 per gallon. Liquid potassium hydroxide is Univar, $3.66 per gram. Sodium chloride coarse crystal, $2,000, I mean, $2.20 per pound to Harcross. And then hydrated lime is Univar again at $27.35 per pound. And then liquid ferric chloride is $2.62.5 cents per gallon to Chemera, sodium bisulfate, JCI Jones, $4.85 per gallon, sodium hydroxide, $1.36 per gallon, $1.36 per gallon Borden in Remington. Sodium hydroxide, $2.87 per gallon Borden in Remington. Potassium permanganate, Coin Chemical Company, $2.785 per pound. Sodium hypochlorite, Roberts Chemical, $5.59.70 per container. Sodium hydrochloride to Univar, $143.21 per gram. Sodium hypochlorite solution, Univar, $2.76.30 per gallon. Polymar, 275-gallon totes, SNF at $1.75 per pound. Ortho polyphosphate phosphate is Harcross, $652.80 per gram. Last page is citric acid 50% solution, Coin Chemical, $3,173.33 per tote. And liquid chlorine, 99.5, is JCI Jones, $3.00 per pound. Polyaluminum chloride is Holland Company, $4.19 per gallon. And polyaluminum chloride gallons, PCH 180, it's Holland again, at $4.48 per gallon. And ammonium hydroxide, 29%, is Borden in Remington, $69.38. Sodium illuminate is $6.29 per gallon from Holland Company. Glycerin-based supplemental carbon, Mumar, at $3.43 per gallon, $3.43. And sodium chloride, food grade, is Harcross at $0.38 per pound. And I did notice, as you were saying, things coming down. Anything with sodium dropped. That was a good sign.
All right. All right, sounds good. Just for the record, could you go through all those again? All right, so does anybody have any questions on the water treatment chemicals contract through Sersg? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to award the Sersg fiscal year '24 water sewer treatment chemicals contract as printed in the agenda packet.
So as, sorry, through you, Chair?
Yeah.
Printed with all the pricing, so as, as...
Sorry, as the town manager, yeah, as the town manager recited. All right, so I'll do that again. So I'll entertain a motion to award the Sersg fiscal year '24 water sewer treatment chemicals contract as recited by the town manager.
So if you got them colored, you'd be able to tell the red ones or the blue ones.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're all set with that. And then, Mike, the last one, the DPW supplies.
Okay. All right. The DPW supplies. So dense grated crushed stone, LaRusso Corporation, $18.88 per ton. Three-eight-inch stone, Burrow Sand and Stone, $25.90 per ton. Half-inch stone, Burrow Sand and Stone, $25.90 per ton. Three-quarter inch stone, LaRusso Corporation, $21.85 per ton. One-and-a-half inch stone, LaRusso Corporation, $22.50 per ton. Stone dust, Burrow Sand and Stone, $22.37 per ton. Ordinary gravel, Burrow, LaRusso Corporation, $19.00 per ton. Processed gravel, LaRusso Corporation, $19.00 per ton. Loom Classic Tractor, $20.42 per ton. Then I'll just skip, we're not part of 10, we're, I mean, we're Zone B when it comes to the washed sand and stone. The second one down is Eastern Foxborough and Norton, and the low bidder was G. Lopes, $24.60 per ton for washed sand for snow and ice removal. And we'll go to Flowable Phil, which is number 11, and it's Burrow Sand and Stone, $1.10 per yard. Ready-Mix Concrete is Burrow Sand and Stone, $141.00 per yard. Number 13 is Burrow Sand and Stone, that's for ready-mix concrete, less than four yards, delivered, $196.00 per yard. Plain manhole frames and covers, John Holdy and Sons, $420 each. Drain manhole frames and covers, John Holdy and Sons, $420 each. Sewer manhole frames and covers, John Holdy and Sons, $420 each. Manhole extension rings, there's three different sizes, one inch, $1.79.71, one-and-a-half inch, $1.92.68, and two inch, $205.68, and that's Ferguson Water Works. Ductile iron hinged and lock... Ductile iron hinged and locking frame and cover, Ferguson Works, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents each. Self-leveling manhole assembly frames and covers, Ferguson Water Works, one thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents each. Catch basin frames, three flange, including the grates, that's John Holdley and Sons again, four dollars and ten cents each. Catch basin frames, four flange, includes grates, John Holdley and Sons, four hundred and twenty-six dollars each. Catch basin square grates, John Holdley and Sons, one hundred and seventy-four dollars each. Catch basin extension rings, Ferguson Water Works, for one inch, one seven, one hundred and seventy-three nineteen, for a one-and-a-half inch, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and two cents, for a two inch, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Rubber composite manhole adjustment riser, Ferguson Water Works, fifty-six seventy-one for a one-by-twenty-four, forty-six dollars and four cents for a one-by-twenty-six, and then, and ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents for a two-by-twenty-six. Rubber composite catch basin adjustment risers, Ferguson Water Works, sixty-three forty-six for a one-by-twenty-four, and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for a two-by-twenty-four. Cast iron duct, detectable warning plate, Ferguson Water Works, one eighty-nine eighty-five for a twenty-four-by-thirty, one fifty-one eighty-seven for a twenty-four-by-twenty-four, and two thirteen fifty-eight for a twenty-four-by-thirty. American Darling, and they told me what this was, but I don't remember, no bids received, American Darling, no bids received. Kennedy eighty-one, Ferguson Water Works, three thousand thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents each, for four hydrants, three dollars, three thousand one hundred, three dollars and five cents each, and three thousand one seventy-one five cents each, I don't know what the money terms is out.
So hydrants?
Muller Super Centurion, two fifty, John Holdley and Sons, twenty-four hydrants, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five each, sixty hydrants, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight each, and eighteen hydrants, three thousand twenty-two dollars each. Recycled asphalt, LaRusso Corporation, fourteen thirty-five, fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents per ton. And high-performance cold patch. We are not out of that bid. Cold patch, we are. So cold patch is TL Edwards, that's item number thirty-three, by the way, TL Edwards, one hundred and twenty dollars per ton. And let's see, anything else? Potmix, Riley Brothers, sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents per ton, that's item thirty-four. And then, let's see if we got anything else here. All right, item thirty-six, thirty-two percent liquid calcium chloride, all states construction, a dollar forty-five per ton. Magnesium chloride and agriculturally-based deicer, innovative municipal products, a hundred, one dollar and seventy-three cents per gallon. And then unleaded gasoline, Dennis K. Burke, eighty-seven octane, and looking for the new increment. The increment is zero point one-one-nine-five per gallon. And for mid-grade unleaded gasoline, it's eleven, eleven, zero point eleven-nine-five per gallon. Premium unleaded gasoline, they're all Dennis K. Burke, is also zero point eleven-nine-five per gallon. Ultra-low sulfur diesel is zero point one-three-nine-five per gallon. And that is it.
I have a little question.
Yeah.
Have we used, what's it? It's a company out of Brooklyn, Holdley, have we used Holdley before, John Holdley and Sons?
I can tell you, I think by the last year.
Just, I've, I've used them for fifteen years at a few properties, so I know they're in this company, they're in this company, yeah. They just did the subdivision, and I'm going to, they just did.
Really?
I didn't know they came over that way.
Yeah, they did, they have used them, last year they had the bid.
Okay.
They're the best.
All right, so we will, there's no further discussion on those items, we'll entertain a motion to award the Sersge fiscal year twenty-four DPW supplies contract as stated by the town manager. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mike, for doing all that reading.
A bunch of Sersge.
I don't think we have any topics reasonably anticipated for you, not reasonably anticipated, unless anybody has anything. All right, and then we'll go to the, our policy of the evening, the code of conduct. Everybody got a copy of this to review, and I think Denise had suggested some edits?
Yes.
Some, yeah, some edits.
It looks like it bled right, I know, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, we just have, we could just have a discussion on it, I don't know, Denise, if you just kind of wanted to go over what your suggestions were, we could kind of start there.
Sure. So the opening, couple paragraphs, both purpose and introduction is just really to kind of understand what we're trying to accomplish with the policy, so if there's ever a question of interpretation about what the language means, you could understand what the thinking was behind the policy to begin with. Applicability, this was originally just for the Norton Select Board, but it seemed to make sense for all appointed and elected officials, I'm not sure why it was narrowed to just the select board, but happy to have discussion about that.
It was just a standard thing that Jen got from KP.
Okay.
So that's, that was the initial.
Yeah.
Piece that we got.
And I actually, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, Denise.
No.
But I will anyway. I actually like the idea of applying it to all the different, all the different boards, so I think that's a great change right off the bat, so.
And so then the, the basic code of conduct didn't really change in content or intent a lot from what was in here before, it was just changed the language a little bit to be a little bit more generic. And then I think in the one that was in relation to the community, I added, I added a couple of bullets to what was already there. So I struck it out entirely and rewrote it, because I didn't, I actually didn't, I missed that it was below it, but you can kind of see, it's the same general intent, it's just written a little bit more clearly and generally, and added a couple bullets for the community piece. Oh, and then the last, the last two sections that I added were, one, were how do we distribute and educate people on it, and then what happens if people violate it, right, discipline piece. There are some limitations to that, but just to kind of generally set our minds around what happens if it is violated.
Mike, does the town have a, like I know in my, my day job, we have a, you know, we have an online system where we can read and acknowledge policies, do we have anything like that for the town, or is it all done on paper?
On paper.
Okay.
But we can, we can easily do that.
And they have to click off on it once they.
Yeah.
Right, right, okay.
Let's see, we're going to be, they'll use kind of a free app to just click, like when acknowledged or something.
Right, right. All right, does anybody have any questions or comments on either the original or Denise's suggestion changes?
Yeah, I had a couple. Who will be the deciding factors on who is to be, you know, to, to launch the discipline for any violation? Because I don't think that's spelled out.
So I think, like, for instance, if it's an appointed person, it would be, who the appointing authority is, which probably in many cases would be us, but there are certainly some that are not us.
Yeah.
So I think, I think it says in accordance with the, under the charter, so I think it would depend on who the appointing authority is.
What about for us?
For us, yeah. So elected, elected, that's what I mean, like elected people, there's limitations to that, right? You'd have to actually, someone would have to do a recall publicly, so there's limitations to what you can do for elected officials, but for appointed, the appointing authority has some additional language.
Yeah, for the discipline, I mean, I'd like to see multiple steps, depending on the violations, obviously, for something that's major, that's itself huge, but.
Yeah.
Right, and elected officials, you know, obviously are afforded a certain amount of protection, right, because, so it has to be through a recall.
I was just going to say.
It has to be through the will of the people, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I have a few things that I'm not comfortable with on this, I mean, we can go through them, or if you want to do them today, or?
Well, I was going to ask, so the next, I think what I'd like to do for the next step would be to have, since it's going to affect other departments and other, not departments, other committees and boards, is to, should we have the re, the chairs of those boards review it? Because I know we, we got in a little hot water with this on the town council policy, where we didn't consult, we didn't even ask for review, I mean, do you guys think that's a good idea, to just send it out and say, hey, listen, this is where we are on it right now?
Sure.
And then Steve, you could, you know, certainly, you know, make suggestions to, to kind of the final, final version of it, but let's get it out there and let people review it, and then meet back as a board, and then decide, you know, if we want, I mean, we don't necessarily have to take any, any recommendations, but we can certainly review them, so. I don't know, what do you, what do you guys think of that? Yeah, good.
I was just going to say, I think that'd be a good idea to mention to the other boards and committees that you're considering this policy and you'd like their input, and maybe wait till we have input from other boards and committees before we send it off to town council.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get their input and then review it again as a board here, and then go through it.
Yeah, I think that makes, I mean, I think that's a good process.
And I'd like to see if a lot of what I have red blend on this will come back from the other boards, so.
Did you email that in, or you?
I did not email that in, you know, because I didn't know, I didn't think we'd be voting on it tonight anyways, so.
Okay.
Or, and, nothing major, it's just, I mean, I think you did a lot of work on this, and it's great, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that could be the next step, so we'll, we'll get this out, so Mike, would you do that?
I'm more than picky.
Get that out to the other boards?
I'm more than picky on words.
Just like you said, we're considering this?
Yeah.
And then, and then the next, then, then send it to KP. Well, then we'll come back, look at the suggestions, then come up with a final draft, send it to KP for them to adjourn. Okay.
Yeah, I'd be fine with our final, like our, as a board, we go through our final version, and then send it to KP once we're, saying this is what we want.
Okay.
Along the lines, is there, just got me thinking, like, I think that's a great idea, I'd like having other boards look at it and all that, but have we ever talked about possibly, and it doesn't have to be super formal or, you know, crazy, but can you imagine if we actually had one meeting where we actually got all the committees and together and just, it's almost just sort of a, not a meet and greet, but almost just something, like, I feel like it's.
Like once a year or something, yeah.
Once a year, and, and, and I think it's more, I don't know, I just feel like it's so weird how we only come together when there's stuff like this, or, I don't know, and maybe there could be some kind of formalized agenda where it's literally the chairs get up and just give a brief overview of the parameters and, and sort of the goals and objectives of that pool, I don't know, something.
Maybe anything they'd like to see us do, you know.
I just, I think there's, there could be something really powerful in doing something like that.
I mean, it certainly, one of the duties of the select board is to, I think the language is to bring the other, of the other town boards and committees into harmony, I think is how, how it's described, I think, in the charter or the bylaw.
To collaborate, so everyone's on the same page, I think the department heads and board chairs should be, try to meet monthly or so.
Yeah.
I think it feels true.
Yeah. Yeah. Mike, thoughts on that?
Or even, or even could be, sorry, could it be around something like, we talked about the gazebo, you know, sort of that, that, you know, the, I don't know, just a nice.
I think it's a good idea. One of the things I always say is like, a guy like Tom Noel, the Chair of the ZBA, he's been there year after year after year, he does an unbelievable job. He doesn't look for any credit or anything, but it would be nice to have people like that in a room where everyone gets to meet everybody, because unless you're involved with the ZBA or have something, before the ZBA, you probably never met Tom before.
Yeah, usually it's a town meeting where we meet everybody.
Yeah. So it'd be nice, I mean, you know, just have coffee and, you know, some pastries or whatever, and get everyone together.
Well, there you go with the food again. Do you, so Meg, are you thinking like something like informal like that, like more of like a social, get people together?
Social, but I do think there should be some.
Like a loose agenda or something to talk about?
A loose agenda, but I, it's so, like, I couldn't, I couldn't pick out, you know, all the planning board members in a row, you know, one's my husband, but address, I don't, you know what I mean? Yes, but, you know what I'm saying, like, it's, it's amazing that you just, everyone's running ten thousand miles an hour.
I think it's a fantastic idea to have like a, you know, coffee and donuts and have everybody meet, even if it's an official meeting, we have to have it recorded, then when we meet, when we discuss what their agenda items are, I think it's great.
Through you, Chair.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good too to hear, at least from the boards and committees that we appoint, kind of like, what have you done in the last twelve months, what are your plans for the next twelve months, and then do you need any direction or any help from us?
Right.
Forward kind of thing, I know, sitting on some of the committees in the past, it's kind of like, what do we, what should we be doing? What should we be focusing on? What is the direction, right? So it'd be kind of good to have, I think, that feedback from us, I think, if they're, if they are struggling with them.
I love it. So who do we start with? When do we start?
I think, I think, I think we set a date, and we do it annually, and everybody.
Right, and we just think about the format, yeah, obviously.
September, right when school starts.
Right, but it's crazy.
I do think that possibly department heads, and should be more frequent, annually, I think is, is great, but I think for effective collaboration, a lot more frequency to meet.
Even quarterly with the chairs and the department heads would be, I think, really helpful.
So you're thinking like maybe one?
Everyone.
Meeting with everyone, and then sort of more frequent meetings with just the department heads and the chairs?
I think quarterly, because again, everyone's at the end of each fiscal quarter.
I like an annual for everybody, and then, yeah, quarterly for, you know, more urgent items maybe. Yeah, you're right.
So.
Get on that.
It's up to Mike units to schedule this, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, we can, we can.
After the summer.
And I'm happy to help brainstorm or do whatever on the side.
Yeah, we can talk about it, we can talk about like maybe, I don't know, what's, what's a good time, October, right, before we get into real.
We have a new superintendent, I mean, there's lots of good stuff.
Maybe before the town meeting, I mean, maybe like a month or so before town meeting, so we can kind of get on the same page, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or maybe after town meeting, because it'll be less busy.
You think after?
And actually, that might be a good time too, because then, then you're starting to tee out budget.
Yeah, for the next, for the next town meeting, yeah.
So maybe after town meeting?
Yeah, the, the end of October would be good, before the holidays, before we start up all the budget stuff again in the summer.
Just do something like school auditorium or something, and bring in refreshments for everybody or something?
Yeah.
I like it.
If it has to be televised, we could do it in middle school, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. All right. Cool. Sounds great, great idea. Right? Any, I kind of lost my, lost track of where we were there.
Town managers, your 10 managers report.
Thank you, Peter. Town managers report.
All right, I want to thank Melissa. She did a great job in obtaining a $4,000 grant to help her out this year with her lifeguards and employment down at ELP. 4,000 healthy summer youth jobs grant program. Congratulations to her. We already talked about each main street, so town hall construction, I'll just give an update. They're getting ready to start all the tree clearing and relocation of gas line. And I'd like to have official groundbreaking on Thursday, July 20th at 6:00.
Can we do it around our meeting? So it's the same day as the meeting and do it?
The meeting's the week before, I think.
Right, the 13th. Or move the meeting to the, I just feel like it's.
Could move the meeting to the 20th?
No, you have to.
I have a meeting.
Oh, you have to meet on the 13th because of the.
Can we do the groundbreaking on the 13th?
We could, yeah, you want to have it like 5:30 and then.
Yeah. So I actually have a meeting.
I won't be around on the 13th.
I won't be around the 20th. So when's the meeting?
The 13th.
So, so that leads me to, to something if you're, if you're doing, Mr. Town Manager. I've asked for this like 15 times. Can we get our meetings sent to us by calendar invites? Jen, I know you're listening, I'm sorry to put this on you again. No.
You don't get that?
No. And I've been asking for it for, for.
No one else get that?
No, I actually had to, I had to schedule a work meeting and I looked and I saw that we had a meeting on the 20th and I had to look at my emails to see that, no, we have it on the 13th of July.
All right.
Yeah. We have to meet on the 13th.
Oh, so July's not 20th, 13th?
I think you actually told me you weren't going to be there.
Yeah, because you're the chair for that one. And then, yeah, it's because I'm not going to be here the 13th, but Steve was going to run the meeting that night. And we have to meet, what, what is it for again, Mike? Were we wearing clothes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so, okay. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room with the date in July.
No, because it has to be before July 13th.
Yeah.
And I'm gone the rest of the month after that, so.
So when's the groundbreaking?
Can we do it the 27th?
I'm going to be gone.
The groundbreaking?
We could.
On the 27th?
Yeah, I'm going to be gone the whole, actually, I might be back by then. I don't know.
And when is the August one?
We could do, oh, we could do it on the 20th, is that what you suggested? The 20th?
20th.
So who's available on the 20th? Are we all available on the 20th?
I'm not.
I'm not.
Of, of what?
July.
For the groundbreaking, Steve.
Oh, for the groundbreaking?
Yeah.
I am.
Can we do it any sooner? The 13th, well, that's why I said the 13th, before our meeting.
Right, because we were just thinking.
So I'm saying I am, but what time are you talking about, like?
Before the meeting, so like, no, like, what, 5:30?
If we did it on the 13th, it would be like 5:30 before your meeting.
Well, I could do either one.
I prefer the 13th, but it's up to you.
I'm going to miss another groundbreaking.
I know. I'm good on the 15th and 20th.
I'll videotip the meeting.
Yeah.
If it works for everybody else, that's fine.
I'll videotip the groundbreaking.
I'll get you a shovel.
What's the settlement?
I don't know the group settlement.
On the senior center, the walls, if you drive by, the walls are going up.
Yes.
They're going to insulate the walls this week and, you know, next week and then do the backfilling. Next week, they're going to start utilities under the slab and then they hope to have the slab poured by July 7th, so. Right along. We had a good meeting this week, myself, the health agent, attorney Corbo from KP, and then attorneys for New England Ice Cream and the Norton Estates attorney. People in Norton Estates have concern about noise from New England Ice Cream. It was a great meeting. The attorneys seem to work everything out. New England Ice Cream's willing, they're willing to spend over a million dollars on noise abatement.
Wow.
They've already done some things, they've already covered the units on the roof to muffle the noise. They're putting in electric for the reefers so they can shut the trucks off. They've relocated trucks for, they moved four of them out of there. They now have them over in, with Bliss Farm over in Albor and up on the offshore, they're buying another building and they've moved four up there, Haverhill, I think it is. And they're looking to build another parking lot, moving the trucks further away from Norton Estates and also build a sound barrier, so. What I said to the, New England Ice Cream, make sure, so their sound engineers are going to work together. So it's like, New England Ice Cream doesn't go out and spend a lot of money and then have Norton Estates say, well, that's not good. Work with their engineer, get everything agreed upon and then, so it, it sounds like everyone's going to work together and do what they can to alleviate some of the noise.
That's great news. That's, that is great. Yeah. It's a tough spot over there. It's, it's, it's busy over there.
Imagine how the cure was.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anything else, Mike?
That's it.
All right, select boards report and mail. Anybody have anything?
I just had two random things, but speaking of Xfinity and that noise, I saw the noise, but the traffic, and I know it's an ongoing thing and I think the Norton place have done an amazing job in getting the words out and all that's been great. This is more towards Mansfield and I don't know if we can tackle this, but, so again, I'm, I am hugely affected by these concerts and I now, you know, have made mental notes and try and do everything I can to avoid, but the other night, I think it was the cure.
It was the cure.
And I went up to, I was in, coming home from a, my, I think it was volleyball, Matt's volleyball game or something, and I said to myself, make a mental note, you know, the concert's going on, don't go by, you know, don't go the regular way home. Totally forgot because there's no, from like Mansfield Crossing, when you, when you come out of there, there's no sign. And once you get stuck, you are stuck. It took me over an hour to get just from where I got stuck to the top of Reservoir Street. I thought I was going to like lose my mind and you can't, you can't go anywhere, can't do anything, can't whatever. So I, if they just had an electric sign or something that let people know before they get in that traffic would have been huge. And I can't believe they don't because it's horrible. And I think the reason is because I don't want the traffic people to go around it, but I think they should have a sign saying, you know, non-concert or residents, or something they could do to point people.
So you're talking about when you come out of Mansfield Crossing and you make that immediate right?
Right, I was actually coming from, and as soon as I passed, once you pass that, you're, you're stuck. And it's literally, you come around the corner and it was, holy God, it was awful.
Yeah, yeah.
Cars weren't moving and.
Yeah, even if you try to go over the highway.
And, you know, I already, I already deal with can't make a left onto my street after 9:30 on concert nights. It's always like, there's always something, but this I felt like, come on, like, can't even like warn me?
Yeah.
So I don't know, it's something if we could ask, I know they weren't receptive the last time we tried to get them to do anything, but.
That's an understatement.
But like, you know, we're the ones that pay for it, like, but they're getting all the tax benefits from Mansfield. It's crazy.
It's a nice benefit, huh? For Mansfield.
Yeah, so I don't know, it's just a future thing. Again, I applaud our, what everyone's been doing, but the only other thing I had was, I don't know if there's, like, if we could put out, if there's a way to sort of inquire about this, but I have two kids, for example, that are sort of of the, you know, 14, almost 16, trying to find summer jobs, really can't right now, it's really hard to even like get anything. So then I thought, well, if they're not going to make any money or do anything, then I want to find them volunteer opportunities because they can get their service hours in for the high school. So I thought, I don't know, in town hall, like even if there was like a two-hour, you know, two-hour day where they could just do filing or do whatever.
Clean out the basement.
Clean out the basement, but.
It's not clean yet.
But I think you could get, a lot of, there's a lot of kids that are sort of in the same boat where they can't get the summer job, but the parents would love for them to have something to do for a couple hours or something, I don't know. I don't know how you sort of get that one.
We'll put that word out when we get the dumpsters in.
Yeah. Like I was even going to go to Windsor Farm and see, do they need volunteers for half a day for, once a week for the whole summer?
She probably would put some kids to work.
Yeah, but I'm sure there's, if there's a way to get the word out to other businesses or.
Well, and the other one, I'll talk to Estelle and Beth, because sometimes some of the seniors need work in their yards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, that would be a fantastic thing to do.
Yeah, there definitely needs to be some partnership with the parents though to be able, because they, you know, some of the parents are at work and they can't be there, but, you know, who's going to direct the kids?
Yeah, and it's not, it's not kids for, you know, like I said, my kids are probably, you know, easily could have a paying job, they're self, there's just, there's nothing available right now. So, and, and, you know, they're busy and they're doing their, their sports and all that stuff, but I'm like, why can't I find something, get some of their hours in?
Stop and shop in Dennis, I was shocked on the door. $18 during the day, $19 at night.
Wow.
I'm not driving my kid down to the stop and shop, but.
It's tough for private companies, I think, because when you have volunteers, they, they, it's hard, you have, you have, if they're doing work, you have to pay them or you have to, you have to do something for them.
So you have to be in charge.
Yeah, but think about it, we have the churches we have in town, we have the, you know, Windsor Farms.
So it's the nonprofits and things like that.
Yeah, town hall, I just kind of believe there's plenty of opportunities if we can kind of organize it in a little bit where, you know, and maybe it's something we work with the superintendent's office where it's like they could, you could go there and they have the whole list of things that they, it's already pre-populated.
Right, right.
So we have some sort of virtual bulletin board almost who could post like, looking for volunteers for X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
On the Mansfield thing, do they, do they still have regular meetings with us, like with the, with the police or they, they just do it?
Police do.
They, and they, but they have like sort of one meeting preseason, right, where they?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not receptive, the select board is not receptive?
I remember it was difficult last year, right?
Yeah.
Trowbridge?
Mike Trowbridge.
Yeah.
So.
There was never originally any kind of community agreement, anything like that?
No, I think there needs to be at some point.
Is there?
So before the season starts, I'll let Brian Clark remind you, we should meet with them when they're filing for their state permit. And I, I know that with the suggestions, as Meg was saying, we've had the suggestions before, to put signs on 495, to put a digital sign out in front of Xfinity Center, just listing what concerts are coming up. So when people are driving home from work, a few days before a big concert, they'll say, oh no, I won't, I'll make sure I don't go down here on that.
And open the parking lots early because that kid walked in last year.
Yeah, they've been better about that this year.
Yeah.
It might gain more traction, possibly approaching the Xfinity Center first.
They, they come to the meetings too.
Yeah, they're, they're.
About what we may want additionally.
Yeah.
And see.
Because Xfinity is supportive of the sign out front, but Mansfield doesn't want to give them a permit for a digital sign.
Well, it might be a, that might be the door open for Norton to come in.
I mean, it's got to be more of our residents are affected by this than Mansfield.
Oh, yeah, easily. And they know it.
Well, yeah, there's, there's no Mansfield residents on that side, right?
Maybe way ahead of the next season.
There's a couple on Reservoir Street, believe it or not. There's a couple houses and first like three houses.
No, it's okay, you know, I think maybe way, way ahead of the next season. I know Chief Simmons was very, he was at the meeting halfway too, so.
Yeah.
He's very fired up about that, which I, I agree with, you know?
Yeah.
Has Xfinity ever been approached by the town, Norman?
Oh, yeah. We've met, we met, last time we met was in the private chief's office with them.
With requests or? Well, didn't they, didn't they kind of surprise you and show up at their chief of police and, and it was, it was just you and Meg, right?
Yeah.
So they kind of, you know? So it went to a gunfight.
It's supposed to be informal and then, yeah.
They're not, they don't play nice.
We thought it was going to be the town manager and a select board member from Mansfield and Meg, and it turned out they had the police there.